roll call. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. Henson?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Ms. Lawless?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McCord?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Stennett?
Mr. Beard?
Present.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby? Mr. Ellinger?
Here.
Ms. Feigl?
Here.
And Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum, so we're ready to proceed, and it is my pleasure to welcome to the podium tonight Pastor Tim Parsons from the Centerpoint Church. Pastor Parsons.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the privilege tonight of being able to pray here. Thank you that we live in a country that's free, that we have the ability to do this, and that we have a mayor and we have a city government that allows this. And we come before you tonight just grateful for the way you've blessed our city and our county, and the direction you've given us, the protection you brought even in the recent storms, and the way you've taken care of us. We're so grateful, so thankful for how you've given direction to these men and women. And it's that we ask for tonight. We come before you recognizing that you're our Creator and you're the one who's supreme. And so tonight, we ask that in every decision that is made, that everything that is said and done, that you would give direction to these women and these men tonight, that they would make decisions that would benefit our city and our county, and would be good for us as well. I pray for them for direction tonight, and I thank you in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. We have a special opportunity this evening to honor the winners of the Kentucky American Water Science Fair, which is celebrating its 25th year this year. Coordinated by the Fayette County Public Schools, this year's fair was held on February 7, and more than 640 students in grades four through 12 competed. Contest involve students in both public and private schools. I had the honor of helping Nick Rowe, President of Kentucky American Water, and Stu Silberman, the Superintendent of our Fayette County Public Schools, present the awards. This year, in honor of our community's unprecedented commitment to environmental quality, particularly to cleaning up our streams, there was the first ever special award related to water, the Mayor's Urban Environmental Award for Outstanding Projects Related to the Environment. With us tonight to represent Kentucky American is Keith Cartier. I think he's here. There he is. Thanks, Keith, who is the Vice President of Operations at Kentucky American. And representing Fayette County Schools are David Helm and Lori Boyne. If you all would stand up, thanks for being here as well. And I want to thank all of you for all that you have done for our children here in Fayette County. And let's give them a round of applause for all of your work. We have so many winners and proud parents tonight that we're going to break our honorees up into three groups, elementary, middle, and high school, and I'll be calling out the names of the schools. We have certificates for everybody, but we don't have time to hand them out individually, so parents and children can retrieve their certificates downstairs in the lobby in just a few minutes. As you have seen, as I have been talking, we've been bringing up in our elementary students. Students, when I call out the name of your school, please raise your hand. Ashland, Athens-Chilesburg, Cassidy, Clay's Mill, Garden Springs, Glendover, Lexington Christian Academy, Liberty, Maxwell, Mill Creek, Picadon, Rosa Parks, Big Turnout, Scapa, Stonewall, and Yates. Let's give them all a hand. in, I want you to know how inspiring it was to go to the science fair and to see so many creative young people demonstrate their interest in science. These young people are truly the future of our community. They are the young people who will one day enable our country to successfully compete in our global economy. So we are delighted to have For those of you who haven't had the opportunity to see the science fair, I will describe it for you very briefly as folks continue to come in. The Bryan Station High School gym was completely filled with displays and presentations that were being made by all of these students and by a number who are not here tonight. And they did an absolutely wonderful job. You would not believe the level of sophistication that was demonstrated in their projects. Well, let me say congratulations to all of our middle school winners and tell you how very proud we are of all of you. When I call out the name of your school, if you would, raise your hand. Beaumont, Bryan Station, Lexington Christian Academy, Lexington Homeschools, Lexington Universal, Lexington Traditional, Mary Queen, Morton, Scapa, the Lexington School, Trinity Christian, great, and Winburn. Let's give them a hand, and we'll get another picture.
Come on, let's do this.
Come on, Diane. Oh. Come here. Scoot. Come over. Oh, don't, no, don't make me hide. These are big people. These are tall people. I know. He's as tall as I am, and he's a four. Yeah, it's okay.
Doing it on three for the smile. Those of you who are stuck are... One, two, and there you go.
He's smiling, and he's a lower level.
As our middle school students are exiting, let me tell the moms and dads and grandparents, aunts and uncles who are here tonight, thank you very, very much for all of the support that you have provided. It isn't just by chance that these young folks have excelled in their schoolwork. It takes a lot of support at home, and we appreciate all of the effort that you have provided. There is a lot of interest in trying to encourage students to pursue STEM majors in college, science, technology, engineering, and math, and clearly these students are on their way towards pursuing careers in that area. We want to offer our congratulations to these high school students who are standing in front of us now and tell you how very proud we are of your accomplishments. And when I call your name, if you'd raise the name of your school, if you would raise your hand. Bryan Station, Lafayette, Dunbar, and Sayre. Congratulations, and we'll do one more photo. I appreciate everybody's indulgence with our efforts to recognize some folks who have done extraordinarily well in their academic careers to this point. We are exceptionally fortunate to have so many gifted young scientists and gifted science and math educators here in Fayette County, and I appreciate you taking the time to recognize them. We're now ready to proceed with the ordinances entitled to second reading. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance accepting the bid of Allen Vanguard Tech Incorporated in the amount of $25,116 for a ballistic ensemble for the Division of Police and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 108. Number two, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 107. Number three, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute supplemental agreement number one with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the acceptance of additional federal funds for the Newtown Pike Extension Project in the amount of $3,975,000 and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 109. Number four, an ordinance amending Section 21-52 of the Code of Ordnances, creating two positions of Program Manager Senior, Grade 120E, and one position of Administrative Officer, Grade 118E, and amending Section 22-52 of the Code of Ordnances, creating one temporary position of Construction Supervisor, Grade 118E, ending on February 26, 2011, all in the Division of Waste Management and Appropriating Funds pursuant to Schedule Number 110. Number five, there's a motion? There's a motion on number five?
Councilmember McCord?
At the request of the administration, I move to amend item number five under the second reading of ordinances to correct the job title for the position being created in the Office of the Mayor from Administrative Officer to Administrative Aid to the Mayor. This is not a material change and does not require a new first reading. So move.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Number five, an ordinance amending Section 21-52 of the Code of Ordnances, abolishing one position of Administrative Officer Senior, Grade 120E, in the Office of the Mayor, and creating one position of Administrative Officer Senior, Grade 120E, in the Department of General Services, amending Section 22-52 of the Code of Ordnances, abolishing one position of Administrative Officer, Grade 118E, in the Department of General Services, and creating one position of Administrative Aid to the Mayor, Grade 118E, in the Office of the Mayor, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 111. Number six, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sidewalk easement and a temporary construction easement from Christine Richmond for the property located at 661 Georgetown Street for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 112. Number seven, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the National Police Athletic League, which grant funds are in the amount of $4,000 federal funds, are for the continuation of the National Association of Police Athletic League's Youth Enrichment Program, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 113, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky State Police, which grant funds are in the amount of $20,000 federal funds, are for an enforcing underage drinking laws project, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 114, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number nine, an ordinance... There's a public hearing.
I had two copies of the docket, and had the wrong one in front of me, but we do have a public hearing required on item number nine, so let's convene that. Does anyone wish to speak to the issues raised by ordinance number nine? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Number nine, an ordinance of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government authorizing the issuance of its industrial building revenue bond, Series 2009, Transylvania University Project, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6,500,000, and the loan of the proceeds thereof to Transylvania University for the purpose of financing various renovations, additions, and improvements to the campus of the university, authorizing the execution and delivery on behalf of the Urban County Government of, one, a trust indenture pursuant to which the bonds will be issued; number two, a loan agreement between the Urban County Government as lender and Transylvania University as borrower, providing for loan repayments sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds as the same become due; three, a bond purchase agreement providing for the sale of the bonds on a negotiated basis; and four, an official statement relating to the bonds and taking other related action. Number 10, an ordinance amending Section 21-52 of the Code of Ordnances, changing the job title of the position Plant Operations Supervisor Senior, Water and Air Quality, Grade 118E, to Plant Operations Supervisor Senior, Water Quality, Grade 118E.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those ordinances?
I have a motion by Councilmember Stennett and a second by Councilmember Henson to approve
those ordinances. I understand there are a couple of abstentions.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to abstain from item nine due to a prior representation of Transylvania University.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin is abstaining. Vice Mayor Gray?
Also abstaining for the same reason.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the matters that just received second reading? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving those ordinances, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gray? Ms. Henson?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lawless?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stennett?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll trust the clerk will note those abstentions. All right, before we proceed to the ordinances for first reading, let me note that I was remiss in not recognizing three members of the mayor's office staff who helped to coordinate getting a whole lot of kids in and out. And if any of you have ever worked with that many elementary, middle, and high school students at one time, you know that's not an easy task. But to Pam Stanley, Anna Harche, and to Mary Ann Blodgett, I really appreciate their assistance in moving things along tonight. Madam Clerk, if you'll give first reading to the ordinances entitled to first reading.
Number 11, an ordinance amending Section 21-52 of the Code of Ordnances, abolishing one position of Administrative Specialist, Grade 110N, in the Division of Accounting, and creating one position of Administrative Specialist, Grade 110N, in the Division of Human Resources, transferring the incumbent appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule Number 115. Number 12, an ordinance of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government authorizing the issuance of taxable general obligation pension funding bond, Series 2009B, in the aggregate principal amount of $70 million, which amount may be increased or decreased by an amount up to 10% for the purpose of financing the costs of funding unfunded liabilities of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, approving the form of the Series 2009B bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the Series 2009B bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the Series 2009B bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bid of the bond purchaser for the purchase of the Series 2009B bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Thank you.
Number 13, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 116.
Thank you very much. If there are no motions, we'll proceed with the resolutions entitled to second reading. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number one, a resolution accepting the bid of NABCO Incorporated, establishing a price contract for total containment vessel for the Division of Police. Number two, a resolution accepting the bids of United Rotary Brush Corporation and ODB, establishing price contracts for sweeper rooms for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number three, a resolution accepting the bid of CNC Machine Shop, establishing a price contract for fabrication of hydraulic fluid tanks for plow trucks for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Four, a resolution accepting the bid of CNC Machine Shop, establishing a price contract for fabrication of calcium tanks for plow trucks for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number five, a resolution accepting the bid of Vehicle Systems Incorporated in the amount of $30,000 for the breathing air compressor for mobile use for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. Number six, a resolution accepting the bid of Radio Communications Systems Incorporated, doing business as RCS Communications, establishing a price contract for an emergency vehicle lighting system for the Division of Police. Number seven, a resolution accepting the bid of ITT Water and Wastewater, establishing a price contract for submergible sledge mixers for secondary digesters for the Division of Water Quality. Number eight, a resolution accepting the bid of Carpet Number eight, a resolution accepting the bid of Carpet World Carpet One in the amount of $28,211.22 for floor replacement for the Downtown Arts Center for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number nine, a resolution accepting the bid of Continental Web Press, establishing a price contract for the Fun Guide 2009 for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 10, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept donations from Hunter Presbyterian Church, $500, Joshua C. Santana PSC, $100, and Richard and Judith Flewelling, $250 for the Cardinal Valley Center's 2008 Holiday Celebration. Number 11, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an exchange of information agreement with the Department of Revenue, Finance, and Administration Cabinet for the Commonwealth of Kentucky at no cost to the Urban County Government, and further authorizing the Director of Revenue and other personnel to execute any documents related to the confidentiality of such information. Number 12, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute rule in intercity adopt a spot program agreements with Christ United Methodist Church, BSA Number 220, 1,30412, Aldersgate Methodist Church, BSA Number 59, 1,56720, Emmanuel Baptist Church, BSA Number 41, 1,23168, Rosemont Baptist Church, BSA Number 98, 1,15740, Beaumont Presbyterian, BSA Number 279, 1,03828, Greater Faith Apostolic Church, BSA Number 238, 1,10360, Young Life, 1,026540, Bluegrass Chapter Order of Demolay, 1,33232, Christian Youth Fellowship, 1,094251, Phillips Memorial Church, 2019156, Tate's Creek High School Lacrosse Club, 52298, Brown &amp; Brown Associates, probably, 772, Boy Scout Troop Number 103, 29885, Boy Scout Troop Number 13, 1,99232, Boy Scout Troop Number 186, 27395, Boy Scout Troop Number 382, 44827, Boy Scout Troop Number 246, 63612, and Tate's Creek Presbyterian Church, Boy Scout Troop 226, 92144, for participation in the Adopt a Spot Roadway Cleanup Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $20,000. Number 13, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute supplemental agreement number one with the U.S. Department of the Army for amendment of the permanent sanitary sewer easement for the property located at 1051 Russell Cave Road at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number 14, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Girl Scouts of Kentucky's Wilderness Roads Council Incorporated, $1,000, Owl Foundation Incorporated, $625, and Bluegrass Alliance for Women Incorporated, $325, for the Office of the Urban County Council at a Cost Not to Exceed the Sum Stated. Number 15, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Louisville Paving Company for Glendover Tennis Court renovation, increasing the contract price by the sum of $1,655 from $148,000 to $149,655. Number 16, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Ubank Steel for bailhouse door modifications, increasing the contract price by the sum of $4,901.35 from $16,800 to $21,701.35. Number 17, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a host city agreement with the World Games 2010 Foundation Incorporated and Lexington Host Committee for the hosting of the 2010 World Equestrian Games at no cost to the government. Number 18, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an ordering document with Oracle USA Incorporated for the purchase of user productivity kits, licenses, and related services at a Cost Not to Exceed $26,551.14. Number 19, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointment of James McCarty Landfill Inspector, Grade 108N, 12.265 hourly in the Division of Waste Management, effective February 2, 2009, ratifying the permanent civil service appointment of Yvonne Brown Childcare Program, A, Grade 107N, in the Division of Family Services, effective April 2, 2008, ratifying the probationary sworn appointments of Tim Morrow, Joseph Witt, Curtis Works, John Walters, Vicki Harold, Charles Bradshaw, Ernest Hudson, Fire Lieutenant, Grade 315N, 16.806 hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 5, 2009, Darren Day, Jeffrey Shields, Charles Hopkins, Stephen Sype, Marcus Blatton, Fire Lieutenant, Grade 315N, 16.806 hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 19, 2009, Ronald Madden, Brian Strange, Greg Bayer, Brian Wood, Paul C., Fire Major, Grade 318E, 3,038184, biweekly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 19, 2009, Carl Tackett, Roy McLean, Fire Captain, Grade 316N, 21.770 hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 5, 2009, Brad Whitaker, Brian Mitchell, Edwin Cruz, James Herrod, C.R. Pendleton, Fire Captain, Grade 316N, 21.770 hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 5, 2009, Michael Farmer, Michael Reese, Mark Samuelson, Michael Henderson, Chris O'Brien, Fire Captain, Grade 316N, 21.770 hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective January 19, 2009, ratifying the probationary Community Corrections Officer appointments of Brian Richardson, John Cox, William Stewart, Linda Monnelly, Charles Fink, Chad Rankin, Wayne Wilson, Kim Jones, Leonard Stalker, Philip Toms, William Fields Jr., Rudy Dawkins, Joseph Gallo, Michael Gabbert, Kelly Stidman, Community Corrections Officer, Grade 110N, 13.931 hourly in the Division of Community Corrections, effective February 16, 2009, approving the unclassified civil service appointments of Freddie DeCosse, Custodial Worker, Grade 102N, 8.898 hourly in the Division of Family Services, effective February 16, 2009, Christopher Phillips, Public Service Worker, Grade 106N, 11.161 hourly in the Division of Waste Management, effective February 16, 2009, James Michael Webb, Commissioner of Public Works, Grade 211E, 4,07693 biweekly in the Department of Public Works, effective January 19, 2009, approving the unclassified civil service appointment to the Office of the Urban County Council of Jamie Lloyd, Aid to Council, Grade 000E, 1,092308 biweekly in the Office of the Urban County Council, effective February 4, 2009. Number 20, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the All Hazards Disaster Preparedness Plan for the 2010 World Equestrian Games Project through June 30, 2009, at no cost to the Urban County Government.
Mayor?
There's a public meeting.
Councilmember Lane?
I move to that item number 21 under second reading resolutions be amended to correct the name of the agency to which the grant application is to be submitted to the Kentucky Department for Local Government. This is a non-material change and does not require a second reading.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lane and a second by Councilmember McCord. Is there any discussion? Okay. Councilmember Gordon?
Can you explain how that's different from what it says on number 21?
I believe the difference is it's abbreviated in one form and spelled completely in the other form.
So you're wanting it spelled out?
Yeah, the one that I just made was to spell it out where it is abbreviated and the other one.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. This is one where a public meeting is required. Now would be the appropriate time for that as well. So we'll convene the public meeting. Does anyone wish to address the council with regard to item number 21? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the public meeting. Councilmember James?
Mayor, I just have a question. Where could citizens get access to the project? Is that on our website, the Raven Run Nature Center project?
There...I know Parks has some information pertaining to it. I don't know that there's a detailed description of it on our website. If anybody can tell me if that's the case, I don't believe there is.
It's not?
But if they have information, they can call the Parks Department.
Okay. Is this a public-private partnership project?
Yes. There was an extensive amount of money raised by Friends of Raven Run, as I recall, was the organization, and so there's been extensive private involvement as well as public dollars.
Do you know how much public...how many public dollars are going towards this? Does anybody know?
I'll let Commissioner Cole address that or...okay, Michelle?
The total project cost of the Nature Center is $1.7 million, and about half a million was donated from private sources. This money is actually...Parks has some funds available that...we had a project that was finished. We have an opportunity...in order to accept that bid, we had to delete several items, and one of which is an ADA sidewalk from the existing parking to the new building. So we're trying to take dollars that we have and get them matched so that we have funds to add back in some of those things that we had to take out.
Okay. Do you know the total of the Parks contribution?
$38,500.
And then, so that would be?
So we're asking for $38,500.
Okay.
In match.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. There's nothing further? Madam Clerk?
Number 21, as amended, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department for Local Government and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $38,500 federal funds and are for additions to the Raven Run Nature Center project. Number 22, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Todd Johnson Contracting for the Coleman House and Ag Extension Office Pump Station Elimination Project... I'm sorry. Excuse me. For the Coleman House and Ag Extension Office Pump Station Elimination Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $20,092.05 from $279,367.92 to $299,459.97. Number 23, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute lease renewals with the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the lease of state police CDL and driver's license offices at no cost to the Urban County Government. 24, a resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government approving the application of Transylvania University for industrial building revenue bond financing of an industrial building project, undertaking the issuance of industrial building revenue bonds to finance the project, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement relating to the project and the bonds and taking other preliminary action. 25, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Foundations for Affordable Housing Incorporated, $1,700, Retired Professional Football Players of Kentucky Incorporated, $875, First Bracktown Incorporated, $1,150, Rand Station Baseball Boosters Incorporated, $250, and One World Films Incorporated, $775, for the Office of the Urban County Council at a Cost Not to Exceed the Sum Stated. And number 26, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement with Barry Randolph for rental of the house at Kearney Hill Golf Course located at 3503 Kearney Road, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue of $70.24, Edmund Cheney for rental of the house at Masterson Station Park located at 3401 Shamrock Lane, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue for $294.55, Gary Newman for the rental of the house at Masterson Station Park located at 3561 Shamrock Lane, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue of $313.39, Chris Tauton for the rental of the house at Raven Run located at 5886 Jack's Creek Pike, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue of $173.71, Fred Williams for rental of the house at Jacobson Park located at 4051 Richmond Road, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue of $70.24, Jim Hallman for rental of the house at Cardinal Run North located at 2075 Parker's Mill Road, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue of $355.25, Fred and Brenda Collinsworth for rental of the house at Heysel Park located at 3601 Briar Hill Road, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue of $317.98, Mitchy Step and Hollis Harville for rental of the house at Caden Lane located at 705 Caden Lane, for services to be rendered in monthly revenue of $329.93.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions? I have a motion by Councilmember Blues and a second by Councilmember James to approve the resolutions which just received second reading, and understand there are a couple of abstentions with regard to item number 24. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will recuse from item number 24 due to prior representation of Transylvania University.
And Vice Mayor Gray?
I also recuse for the same reason.
All right. Any further discussion? Then we appear ready to vote. Those in favor of approving those resolutions receiving second reading, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Ms. Lawless?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stennett?
Yes.
Mr. Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Feigl?
Yes.
And Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those resolutions are approved. Madam Clerk, if you give first reading to the resolutions entitled to first reading.
Resolution number 27, a resolution accepting the bids of Two MC Lawn Care LLC, A Plus Lawn and Landscape Incorporated, BJ Mowing, Central Kentucky Turf Incorporated, Cut Above LLC, G&amp;G Lawn Care LLC, Gainesway Services, Galtz Lawn Care, Happy's General Contracting and Maintenance, Hunter's Lawn Service, J&amp;S Turf Mowing, KNM Mowing LLC, Landscape Supply and Design, Lexington Turf Maintenance LLC, McGee Springs Incorporated, Robertson Mowing Service LLC, Wright's Farm Services Incorporated, Wright's Home Improvement and Mowing LLC, and ZKB Construction Services and Maintenance, establishing price contracts for mowing city areas, medians, nuisance, and downtown parks for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 28, a resolution accepting the bid of Madrix Doing Business as Tri Larry Incorporated, establishing a price contract for trail bylaws for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 29, a resolution accepting the bids of Insight Pipe Contracting Incorporated, Institute Form Technologies Incorporated, Leak Eliminators LLC, Pipe Eyes LLC, Reynolds Inliner Incorporated, Sanitary Management and Engineering Company Incorporated, Tobacco Rose Farms Construction and Development Services, Triton Services Incorporated, Underground Technologies Incorporated, and Woodall Construction, establishing price contracts for sanitary sewer system rehabilitation for the Division of Water Quality. Number 30, a resolution accepting the bid of Jarbo Construction Incorporated in the amount of $124,990 for the passenger elevator at the Carver Community Center for the Division of Parks and Recreation, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Jarbo Construction Incorporated related to the bid. Number 31, a declaration of official intent with respect to reimbursement of temporary advances made for capital expenditures to be made from subsequent borrowings. 32, a resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government authorizing the advertisement for bids and the distribution of a preliminary official statement for the purchase of the principal amount of $70 million taxable general obligation pension funding bonds, Series 2009B, which amount may be increased or decreased by an amount of up to 10%. 33, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Bluegrass Irish Society Incorporated, $400, and Oscars Gala Incorporated, $700, for the Office of the Urban County Council at a Cost Not to Exceed the sums stated. 34, a resolution approving pursuant to KRS 62.055 and Section 22-55.1 of the Code of Ordinances with the bond with the surety of Donald W. Blevins Jr., Fayette County Clerk, in the amount of $400,000, and directing the Department of Law to record the bond with surety along with the certified copy of this resolution in the Office of the Fayette County Clerk. 35, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute five releases of easements, releasing storm easement on property located at 3769 Branham Park and 440 Weston Park, a streetlight easement on property located at 448 Weston Park and 452 Weston Park, a streetlight easement on property located at 456 Weston Park and 460 Weston Park, a streetlight easement on property located at 461 Weston Park and 465 Weston Park, and a streetlight easement on property located at 268 Summersley Place and 272 Summersley Place. 36, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a release of easement, releasing a streetlight easement on property located at 316 through 320 Silver Bell Trace, Sunny Slope Farm. 37, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Gershman, Brickner, and Bratton Incorporated for Master Plan Recycling Program, increasing the contract price by the sum of $17,965 from $253,601 to $271,566. Number 38, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number two to the contract with Bluegrass Pride for Environmental Public Education, increasing the contract price by the sum of $80,000 from $257,475 to $337,475. Number 39, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sidewalk easement and a temporary construction easement from James and Linda Godfrey for the property located at 385 Georgetown Street for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 40, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sidewalk easement and temporary construction easement from James and Linda Godfrey for the property located at 387 Georgetown Street for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 41, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Stonewall Wesleyan Methodist Church for the property located at 3353 Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,300 plus usual and appropriate usual and appropriate closing costs. Number forty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed for conveying a temporary construction easement from Joseph and Margaret Fox for the property located at three-four-three-two Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of one-thousand dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number forty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Gretel and Jane Hignite for the property located at three-four-three-three Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Forty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Helen Latham for the property located at three-four-three-six Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number forty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Donna Rousey for the property located at three-four-four-four Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Forty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from David Noyes for the property located at three-four-four-five Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Forty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Joseph Moore for the property located at three-four-four-eight Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Forty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Sterling and Rebecca Welsh for the property located at three-four-four-nine Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of sixteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Forty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Mary Ann Terry for the property located at three-four-five-two Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number fifty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Cameron and Mary Peck for the property located at three-four-five-three Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of fifteen-hundred dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Fifty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Claudia Johnson and Janet Carter for the property located at three-four-five-six Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number fifty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Jack C. Rooker, Jr., for the property located at three-four-five-seven Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Fifty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Roger F. Owens for the property located at three-four-six-oh Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number fifty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Roy Prater for the property located at three-four-six-four Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of six-hundred dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number fifty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement for a property from John R. Riley for the property located at three-four-six-five Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of fifteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Fifty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Diane and John Gersell for the property located at three-four-six-eight Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Fifty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Zach and Linda Carter for the property located at three-four-six-nine Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Fifty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Damian and Kathleen Moore for the property located at three-four-seven-oh Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of six-hundred dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number fifty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Evelyn Navyer for the property located at three-four-seven-three Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number sixty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Chris R. and Rebecca A. Chancellor for the property located at three-five-oh-six Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of one-thousand-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Sixty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Maurice and Deborah Reed for the property located at three-five-one-oh Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Sixty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Rose Greider for the property located at three-five-one-four Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of fourteen-hundred dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number sixty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from David and Sandra Evans for the property located at three-five-six-one Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number sixty-four, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Diane Caldwell, Social Worker Senior, Grade One Thirteen E, one-thousand-two-eighty-two-two-four bi-weekly in the Department of Social Services effective November twenty-fourth, two thousand and eight. Angela Williams, Social Worker Senior, Grade One Thirteen E, one-thousand-five-eighty-ninety-six bi-weekly in the Division of Emergency Services effective March second, two thousand and nine. Christopher Cooper Rider, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Grade One Twenty E, three-thousand-two-ninety-nine forty-four bi-weekly in the Division of Parks and Recreation effective March two, two thousand and nine. Latisha Chancellor, Telecommunicator Senior, Grade One Thirteen N, nineteen-point-nine-six-one hourly in the Division of Emergency Management, nine-one-one, effective March sixteen, two thousand and nine. Thomas Webb, Program Manager Senior, Grade One Twenty E, two-thousand-nine-nineteen-ninety-three bi-weekly in the Division of Environmental Policy effective March two, two thousand and nine. Monica Taylor, Telecommunicator Senior, Grade One Thirteen N, seventeen-point-oh-three-six hourly in the Division of Emergency Management, nine-one-one, effective March sixteen, two thousand and nine. Sandra Stone, Buyer, Grade One Twelve E, one-thousand-five-ninety-five-twelve bi-weekly in the Division of Purchasing effective March two, two thousand and nine. Jenny Corr, Telecommunicator Senior, Grade One Thirteen N, nineteen-point-oh-nine-eight hourly in the Division of Emergency Management, nine-one-one, effective March second, two thousand and nine. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Thad Scott, Engineering Technician, Grade One Eleven N, in the Division of Water Quality effective February eighteen, two thousand and nine. Byron Mitchell, Engineering Technician, Grade One Eleven N, in the Division of Water Quality effective February fourth, two thousand and nine. Amanda Williamson, Customer Service Specialist, Grade One Ten N, in the Division of Government Communications effective February nineteen, two thousand and nine. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Reed Bowles, James Boyett, William Deve, David Fedco, Erin Greenleaf, Anthony Woodley, Joseph Holland, Brian McAllister, Jarvis Middleton, Joshua Mitchell, Adam Ray, Justin Roland, Derek Smith, Gary Thurman, Jason Wallace, Police Officer, Grade Three-Eleven N, the Division of Police effective January nine, two thousand and nine. Ratifying the probationary Community Corrections Officer appointments of Mackenzie Moses, Christopher Lane, Community Corrections Officer, Grade One Ten N, in the Division of Community Corrections effective February eighteen, two thousand and nine. Ratifying the permanent Community Corrections Officer appointments of Stanley Anderson, David Bryan, Christopher Cantor, Stephanie Doss, Paul Gaines, John Girardi, James Harmon, Adam Hires, Michelle Hunt, Daniel Keeling, Kevin Lawson, Bane McCracken, Daniel Pedego, Anne Schultz, Rochelle Walker, Community Corrections Officer, Grade One Ten N, in the Division of Community Corrections effective March one, two thousand and nine. Sixty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute Oracle License and Service Agreement and any other related documents with Oracle and/or Metaformers Incorporated for Acquisition of People Soft Enterprise Real Estate Management and Enterprise Transaction Billing Process or Licenses, Updates and Support at a Cost Not to Exceed forty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and eighty-six cents. Number sixty-six, a resolution amending the agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC for storm debris cleanup services by an amount not to exceed an additional three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars for additional work performed for a total amount not to exceed seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to the agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC. Sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of sixty-five-thousand-dollar federal funds and are for a Safe Routes to School project for the Young Men's Christian Association of Central Kentucky. Sixty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one, final to the contract with Meyer Midwest Incorporated for the Elizabeth Street Drainage Improvements Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-nine dollars and twenty-four cents from two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and fifty cents to three-hundred-and-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Sixty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a contract with the Lexington Legends Professional Baseball Club for Public Education about stormwater and household waste management required by the Stormwater Quality Management Program at a Cost Not to Exceed thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Number seventy, a resolution recognizing the disproportionate confinement of juvenile members of minority groups and stating the Urban County Council's support of efforts to reduce disproportionate minority confinement, the collection and aggregation of data by law enforcement agencies, and the continued funding of delinquency and crime prevention programs and alternatives to secure detention. Number seventy-one, a resolution authorizing the Division of Human Resources to internally advertise for an administrative specialist principal position in the Division of Police. Number seventy-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sidewalk easement and a temporary construction easement from Jeffrey and Ingrid Grimes for the property located at three-twenty-five Roosevelt Boulevard for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Brian A. and Kelly R. Miller for the property located at three-four-four-oh Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Unitarian Universalist Church of Lexington for the property located at three-five-six-four Clay's Mill Road for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Robert and Rita Shara for the property located at six-six-four Cromwell Way for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a temporary construction easement from Charles Watson and Catherine Prather for the property located at six-six-five Cromwell Way for the Clay's Mill Road Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of two-thousand-twenty-five dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an corrected encroachment agreement with JDL Lexington LLC to allow encroachment into the right-of-way at two-two-two West Vine Street at no cost to the Urban County Government. And number seventy-eight, a resolution amending section E of the Engineering Services Contract with Kinselman, Klein, and Golsman LLC for the downtown streetscape master plan to include two additional traffic engineering services, increasing the contract price by the sum of eighty-eight-thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Myers, I believe you indicated you had a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to spin the rules and give second reading to items number thirty-five and number thirty-six.
There's a motion.
Number thirty-five and thirty-six?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hold on for just a moment.
Okay.
We'll recognize Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, I have a walk-on. The administration asked me to make this motion, and it relates to ice storm cleanup and the funds, we're hoping to get the funds reimbursed by FEMA, if I understand correctly. I move to place on the docket under first reading of resolutions the following six resolutions for acceptance of bids and entering into agreements for the performance of cleanup services at various parks and golf courses related to the ice storm. Number one, Storm Reconstruction Services, Inc., in the amount of twenty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents; two, Arbor Masters Tree Service, in the amount of twenty-six-thousand dollars; three, Huffman Construction, Inc., in the amount of fifty-thousand dollars; four, Stewart Contracting LLC, in the amount of thirty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars; five, Schwartz Mowing, Inc., in the amount of twenty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars; and number six, DRC Emergency Services LLC, in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
I have a motion, but Councilmember Gordon and a second, but Councilmember Myers to add those items to the docket under first reading of resolutions. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. Madam Clerk, if the motion carries, and Madam Clerk, if you'll give first reading to those items.
Resolution number seventy-nine, a resolution accepting the bid of Storm Reconstruction Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in the Urban County Council Districts Four and Five, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Storm Reconstruction Services Incorporated related to the bid. Number seventy, let's see, number eighty, a resolution accepting the bid of Arbor Masters Tree Services in the amount not to exceed twenty-six-thousand dollars for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in the Urban County Council Districts One and Eleven, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Arbor Masters Tree Services related to the bid. Number eighty-one, a resolution accepting the bid of Huffman Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed fifty-thousand dollars for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation at Avon Lakeside, Piccadon, and Tate's Creek Golf Courses, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Huffman Construction Incorporated related to the bid. Number eighty-two, a resolution accepting the bid of Stewart Contracting LLC in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in Urban County Council District Number Nine and at Meadow Brook Golf Course, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Stewart Contracting LLC related to the bid. Number eighty-three, a resolution accepting the bid of Schwartz Mowing Incorporated in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in Urban County Council District Two and at Kearney Hill Golf Course, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Schwartz Mowing Incorporated related to the bid. Number eighty-four, a resolution accepting the bid of DRC Emergency Services LLC in A resolution accepting the bid of DRC Emergency Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $177,887.50 for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in the Urban County Council Districts Three, Six, Seven, Eight, Ten, and Twelve, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC related to the bid.
Thank you very much. Now, Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before second...we asked for second readings. Can I ask for something clarification on one of the first readings?
Sure.
Okay. Number seventy-eight. I’m not...I don’t remember this being in our work session packet, so if I can just get...and folks are nodding that it was, but I don’t recall. If you would clarify, Mr. Webb, Commissioner Webb, what the two...what the two additional traffic engineering services are and from what account the $88,000 is coming from.
If you recall, the streetscape master plan on Main and Vine Street called for a floating bike lane, and whenever we went and we had a pre-permit meeting with District Seven concerning what they may need from us to permit that floating bike lane and non-peak parking on Main and Vine Street. It requires a new lane configuration and new signal timing. That was not included. It was not anticipated that that would be a part of the streetscape. There is a miscellaneous section of KKG’s contract that could pick up things like that, but it did not have hourly rates for that type of work. And so what this resolution is asking is to put those engineering classifications and hourly rates into that miscellaneous section so that that work can be billed through there. The total is $88,000. Looking at what we’re projecting for streetscape, it can be absorbed through the...in the design and construction funds that are already appropriated.
Okay, so the account number that’s listed in the supporting documentation that we have on our screen that you can’t see right now, which is, I guess, just in the resolution somewhere, that’s the account for the construction from which these funds, because it actually does identify an account number?
Yes, ma’am.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the rules and give second reading to item number thirty-five and thirty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? I have a second, but Councilmember McCord, Councilmember Gordon.
Yes, I have been asked by the administration to give second reading to number seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four. Those are the ice storm cleanup items that were just read.
Others, Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. I’d like to give second reading to number thirty-six and number sixty-four due to time-sensitive nature. Thank you.
Did you say thirty-six and sixty-four? Okay, and we already got thirty-six squared away. Councilmember Lawless.
Yes, I’d like to...I’d like to suspend the rules and ask for a second reading on number seventy-seven. It’s a correction of the legal description of the property.
Others, Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. I’d like to suspend the rules for number thirty-nine and forty. This is the Georgetown Street Accessibility Sidewalk Project, and we need to expedite that. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. I’d like to suspend the rules for a second reading on thirty-two, thirty-five, and sixty-six.
Thirty-two. Did you say thirty-five?
Thirty-five and sixty-six.
You already have thirty-five, sixty-six. Thirty-nine. Okay. All right. Any others? All right.
I apologize. I gave you the wrong number on sixty-four. It was not sixty-four. It was sixty-seven. Apologies. Please replace sixty-four with sixty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And now I have what we will deem to be a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of giving second reading to the following resolutions: number thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty, sixty-six, sixty-seven, seventy-seven, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four. Were there any that I missed? Seeing none, we’ll proceed to vote. Those in favor suspending the rules to give second reading to those resolutions, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number thirty-two. A resolution of the Lexington County Government authorizing the advertisement for bids and the distribution of the preliminary official statement for the purchase of the principal amount of its $70 million taxable general obligation pension funding bond Series 2009B, which amount may be increased or decreased by an amount of up to 10%. Thirty-five. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute five releases of easement, releasing a storm easement on property located at 3769 Brannan Park and 440 Weston Park, a streetlight easement on property located at 448 Weston Park and 452 Weston Park, a streetlight easement on property located at 456 Weston Park and 460 Weston Park, a streetlight easement on property located at 461 Weston Park and 465 Weston Park, and a streetlight easement on property located at 268 Summersley Place and 272 Summersley Place. Number thirty-six. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a release of easement, releasing a streetlight easement on property located at 316 through 320 Silver Bell Trace, Sunny Slope Farm. Thirty-nine. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deconveying a permanent sidewalk easement and temporary construction easement from James and Linda Godfrey for the property located at 385 Georgetown Street for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number forty. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deconveying a permanent sidewalk easement and temporary construction easement from James and Linda Godfrey for the property located at 387 Georgetown Street for the Georgetown Street Sidewalk Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $100 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. A resolution amending the agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC for storm debris cleanup services by an amount not to exceed an additional $342,000 for additional work performed for the total amount not to exceed $780,000, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to the agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC. Number sixty-seven. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of $65,000 federal funds and are for the safe routes to school project for the Young Men’s Christian Association of Central Kentucky. Number seventy-seven. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a corrected encroachment agreement with JDL Lexington LLC to allow encroachment into the right-of-way at 222 West Vine Street at no cost to the Urban County Government. And seventy-nine. A resolution accepting the bid of Storm Reconstruction Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $28,937.50 for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in the Urban County Council Districts Four and Five, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Storm Reconstruction Services Incorporated related to the bid. Number eighty. A resolution accepting the bid of Arbor Masters Tree Service in an amount not to exceed $26,000 for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in Urban County Council District One and Eleven, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Arbor Masters Tree Service related to the bid. Number eighty-one. A resolution accepting the bid of Huffman Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation at Avon Lakeside, Picano, and Tates Creek Golf Courses, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Huffman and Construction Incorporated related to the bid. Eighty-two. A resolution accepting the bid of Stewart Contracting LLC in an amount not to exceed $39,390 for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in the Urban County Council District Nine and at Meadow Brook Golf Course, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Stewart Contracting LLC related to the bid. Eighty-three. A resolution accepting the bid of Schwartz Mowing Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $28,250 for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in the Urban County Council District Two and at Kearney Hill Golf Course, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Schwartz Mowing Incorporated related to the bid. And number eighty-four. A resolution accepting the bid of DRC Emergency Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $177,887.50 for storm cleanup services for the Division of Parks and Recreation in the Urban County Council Districts Three, Six, Seven, Eight, Ten, and Twelve, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC related to the bid.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve those items? Do here a second. I have a motion, but Councilmember Myers and a second, but Councilmember Blues to approve those items that just received second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, we’ll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving those resolutions, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Henson.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Stenett.
Yes, ma’am.
Mr. Beard.
Yes.
Mr. Beard.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Feigl.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved. That brings us down to communications from the mayor. They’re just for information purposes. Number nine on the agenda are announcements. Does any council member have announcement to share? Councilmember Feigl. Or we can do it after the public comment, if you prefer. All right. We’ll do that. Let’s proceed then with public comment, and I have two people who’ve indicated a desire to speak this evening. Mr. McCarthy, if you’d step to the podium. You’ll have three minutes.
Your Honor and members of the council, first off, when you do any streetscape projects, please avoid doing anything that would reduce the traffic carrying capacity of the streets themselves. I have no problem with decorating the streets. I just want them to be able to handle the traffic load. And second, while this falls outside of your actual jurisdiction, I’ve heard way too much chatter for my comfort of the possibility of the federal government and some states replacing gasoline taxes with some kind of odometer tax or worse, equipping every vehicle with some sort of tracking device that would keep track of where and when it was driven. I mention this to you even though it will be fought over at higher levels of government because I think this council has a better shot at influencing our congressmen and senators in Washington than I as an individual have, and the idea of having something track where I go and when alarms me as a terrible invasion of privacy, first of all. Second, as far as taxing people according to how much use they’re getting out of the roads and how much wear and tear they’re putting on the roads, an odometer tax would be less efficient and less fair than the fuel taxes. What we need to do is to, one, set the fuel taxes at whatever level it takes and adjust for inflation. Number two, levy equivalent taxes on any alternative fuels based on their energy content. Perhaps put electric meters on any electric cars that you would plug into a wall outlet to recharge, but have them measure only electricity put in from an external source or generated by solar batteries, not by the gasoline engine of a gasoline-electric hybrid that is converted to be pluggable. And I say this because the odometers and tracking devices do not have any way to tell you what percentage of the distance a vehicle traveled it was fully loaded with all the weight it could have crammed into it or towing a trailer versus what percentage of the distance it traveled it hauled only its driver.
Mr. McCarthy, you have 20 seconds. All right. The last speaker I have listed is Eric Patrick Mar. Mr. Mar, if you’d step to the podium, you’ll have three minutes.
And Mayor, also after this, we have some disciplinary issues that need to be dealt with, too.
Thank you.
Good evening, y’all. Eric Patrick Mar, 207 Cassie Avenue. I just wanted to speak because I know you guys have your retreat tomorrow morning. I think you guys do, and so with my ongoing transforming Lexington’s economy work, I wanted to just share with you guys my latest thoughts and understandings of what’s going on, and then perhaps throw some things out there that you might like to talk about. And if I go to three minutes, I might ask for an extension, and I think you might like it, Mr. Mayor, at the end, because I have something you might like, maybe. So transforming Lexington’s economy, I just want to talk about this for a second. Next slide, please. In the Herald Leader on February 7th, I believe Beverly Fortune wrote the article. It is about Lexington Board of Realtors, I believe it was, brought in a consultant from Florida, did a survey about 3,000 bluegrass residents, and the majority of them, the headline was “Economic Development is Our Top Priority,” from the citizens of the Herald Leader. And so I want to maybe speak for them or at least help drive the conversation towards that. Please. So I just wanted to give maybe the public some stats that I’m sure we see, but I just wanted to...I don’t know if everybody really understands where we’re at. LFU CG, of course, $25 to $27 million in the hole for next year so far for your budget according to the $556 million Main Street stimulus request. It just shows how far behind, according to the mayor’s office, we are in funding communities’ needs. Half a billion dollars right there, probably over many, many years. This is not just the past six or 12 months. For the stormwater fees, from what I understand, we need $250, $300 million over the next several years. So we’re getting close to a billion dollars just in LFU CG that we’re in the hole. My guess is 20, 30 some odd years, if not more. Sorry. In Kentucky, we have 29 of the country’s 100 poorest counties. Lexmark with their 17% decrease last year, of course. UK is laying off home sales 14% down. Toyota has lost. They don’t usually lay anybody off. They try to avoid that at all costs, and they’re laying off temporary employees over 250. Keeneland is talking about going to slots. Keeneland’s sales, if you can see the bottom there, you can’t, down 40 some odd percent last year. It’s just on, 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 on. So my contention is that we need an economic transformation, a reinvention, if you will. This is my ongoing contention. And so...next slide, please. And so last night, I got this...I’ve been trying to talk to Congress Lexington for 18 months, and I have never been engaged, nobody has returned my calls or anything, until yesterday, the research director found my blog, transformed Lexington, and commented and said, his quote was, “Economic development is alive and well in the bluegrass. We’re an oasis, and we’re special.”
Mr. Mar, you have about 10 seconds left.
Okay. Can I have an extension? I think you’ll like it towards the end.
If there’s a motion, yes. I have a motion from Councilmember Ellinger to extend for two more minutes. I have a second, but Councilmember Feigl, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion. Let’s have a show of hands. All in favor of the extension, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. You have two additional minutes, Mr. Mar.
Thank you for the guys voting yes, because the citizens said that’s their top priority. So I just want to talk about things. I appreciate your all’s help. And so the numbers in the past three and a half years, Lexington, the numbers are given to me, $270 million in direct investment into Lexington. That’s about an $80 million a year average. Next slide, please. And so then they challenged me, actually, to go check out another city. So I just happened to choose Austin, which is their kind of pet model. It turns out, in one year in 2007, Austin had $690 million of VC investment. Now, I know Austin two to three times bigger than Lexington, but we’re talking about eight to nine times more investment in Austin than in Lexington. And then watch this. I just happened to find this. I didn’t even realize. Austin, the human capital. Next slide, please. Notice...and then they have this thing called Austin Opportunity, their three-pronged foundation for economic development, economic diversification, not just focusing on one thing, like we sort of do with us horse capital of the world. Then they have brain power is our greatest resource, keeping greater Austin great. I think I’ve got one minute left, probably. Next, please. So my idea for reinvention is we need, I believe, we need to diversify our economic base beyond horses or agriculture, but our brain power. We have so many people, like that Ford Flex you see in the middle. There’s a guy downtown who designs iPhone applications. Ford Motor Company contracts him to design these high-tech devices, and so you can take a virtual tour of the Ford vehicle right on your iPhone because of a guy downtown. We have Elevation Creative, who is becoming possibly the next Pinnogram designer. We have all these talented people. Randy Lynn is an e-health records software developer right downtown. Our brain powers are greater. If we could tap into that. Next slide. I’m almost done. I think I have 10 seconds.
10 seconds left.
The last one tomorrow, I suggest perhaps revisiting super branding Lexington, a hub website, and then the STEM scholarship, I think, is a good idea. I know it failed miserably, but maybe tomorrow, at least revisiting the possibilities of investing into our people somehow or another. I would think that would be a great way of going about things for the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mar. Does anyone else wish to address the council? All right, we’ll return to Councilmember Feigl, and then we’ve got a couple of disciplinary matters. Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, the Chevy Chase Merchants Association has been working with the Parking Authority at the request of former Councilman Bill Farmer, and they have been meeting on a regular basis. And one of the things they discovered in their conversations was that there are several parking issues in the Chevy Chase area because it is very unique. And as a result of that, the Parking Authority is now willing to do the first small-area parking study, which will be done in Chevy Chase. And they are having a public meeting, I’m sorry, on Monday, March the 9th, at 6:30 at Buddy’s, and this is open to the public, and they are looking for input into ideas for parking. This will be advertised in the Chevy Chasers March Edition and also the Downtown Lexington Corporation. be advertised in the Chevy Chasers March edition and also the Downtown Lexington Corporation Monday Matters newsletter. And I just would like to encourage you to come and see what they are doing because you may, other council members may have similar areas in their districts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further announcements, Commander Stack and Chief Hendricks, I believe each of you have a matter or two.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This is an allegation that has been made against Detective Keith Boer that he had committed the offense of improper use of divisioned-owned vehicles in violation of General Order 732H, Section 1.13, operation of vehicles. The punishment for this conduct recommended was a written reprimand and loss of home complete privileges for a period of 60 days.
Move approval, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Myers to accept, to approve the recommended discipline. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council. In the matter of firefighter Robert Smith, it's alleged that he was absent without leave from regularly scheduled work hours. The recommendation of the administration in consultation with Commissioner Public Safety is a written reprimand. Have signature of conformity and agreement on the party of the charged person, and that is the recommendation.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon to approve, a second by Councilmember Henson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Chief?
In the matter of firefighter Jeff Nally, two charges, the first being absent without leave from regularly scheduled work hours, the second, conduct unbecoming an officer. In the first instance, the recommendation was a written reprimand, for the second, a 24-hour suspension without pay. And again, I have indication of signature of conformity.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Myers, second by Councilmember McCord. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Does anyone else have any matters? A motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion by Councilmember Myers to adjourn is seconded by Councilmember Gordon. All in favor, please stand.
Please stand.
Motion is approved. Thanks.